No, okay. We're gonna call the Town Council's special meeting scheduled to start at 5:30 September 24th, 2025, to order at 5:42 and?
And we'll call this special meeting the Town of Cromwell Board of Finance to order 5:42 as well.
Okay. Given that both boards have the same agenda item as their first agenda item, we will now move into discussion with Board of Finance regarding Cromwell Middle School bonding. I assume yours has discussion with Town Council for their for?
Uh, yes, discussion with Town Council regarding Cromwell School bonding. And so, uh, Tony, it'll turn over to you or?
Yeah, I would ask Sharon to introduce the two gentlemen and John Healy. Go ahead, Sharon.
John Healy is our bond advisor and he's from Mezzaro. And then Glenn Rybacki is our bond counsel and he works for Pullman.
That's it. That's your introduction. Thank you, Your Honor. If you'd wanted a longer introduction, you just send it ahead of time. Mr. Mealy, good to see you. So, good evening. This is the first time I've had the opportunity to address a joint session of, you know, you've got an exceptionally well-managed budget, you know, you've got very strong reserves, very strong finances, conservative budgeting principles, and you tend to refrain from issuing much debt. So, uh, so when we talk about going into the market next month to fix out the town's portion of the Cromwell Middle School project, that's gonna be the first time that the, uh, that the town has been in the market since 2019, I believe. You know, we've, we've issued two sets of short-term notes to finance the construction, but the last time we were in the public markets doing a bond deal was 2019, which is, you know, a good long time. And so, as you'll see in some of the stuff we'll talk about, in fact, we could probably just jump there right now, just looking at what the town's current debt profile is. I believe that's slide three. There you go. You know, so we're talking about debt service payments right now for 25, 26, uh, you know, right around 1.4 million. The typical level for the Town of Cromwell over my time here and historically has been around, you know, three to, you know, three and a half million. And whoever the finance director or the town manager was, uh, you know, the charge to us on the underwriting side was we always want to keep our debt service right around there because obviously that, that's a bogey that we don't want moving when it comes to our annual budget process. It's also the one that can most quickly jump up on you and get out of hand. So, um, so we did have, and I'm more of a spectator in this, you guys have lived it with the length of the runway on the school construction project. You know, it was one that we saw coming for a long time. Uh, I think the town was able, uh, for the people who sit in these seats, uh, to appreciate that, okay, we're, we wanna find a way to be able to take on such a large debt burden. And, uh, and just as an aside, you know, right now, the town has, I think, about 10 million, excuse me, 13 million dollars of debt outstanding, 13 for the, you know, all told. That is an amazing place to be. It takes a lot of discipline, uh, to be in a place like that. But, um, and so when we talk about issuing even a $40 million bond, that's four, basically four times what, what you've got outstanding. So it is, you know, we know, we knew that it was going to be a kind of a shock to the system from where Cromwell has typically, um, you know, pegged their debt. So, um, so we wanted to find a way to, to try to feather it into the town's existing debt profile where it wouldn't create instant negative budgetary pressure. And frankly, also negative rating pressure as well. I mean, the town, back in, I think, 2013, we identified it, uh, earlier this week, you know, became a AAA community, um, you know, again, an outlier among a lot of your municipalities, your peer municipalities. I know a middle town's gonna say, wait, we're a AAA. They're a Fitch AAA community. You guys are an S&amp;P AAA community. There is a difference. And, uh, and so, uh, you know, you've been able to hold that AAA rating for a long time. I know it's been a source of pride for a lot of the people who sit in these chairs. And, um, and so, you know, we obviously try to be good custodians of that as well. And, you know, infrequent market participation has helped with that because you haven't been layering on debt, upon debt, upon debt. But, uh, you know, so between preserving the AAA and wanting to, uh, you know, kind of mitigate negative budgetary pressure, trying to keep debt service around 3.4, 3.5 million or under, you know, has been kind of the unofficial target. And so, um, in 2023, uh, that was the last year that we had, uh, I think, 3.4 million debt service uh, in the town's budget. Uh, and then, uh, starting in 2024, we dropped down to the level where you kind of see us at right now, which is, uh, right around 1.4. And so, uh, so it's, it's a prime position. It's, it's the dream position that most towns would hope for to have such a big debt load coming on just as you've dropped, you know, you've almost cut your annual debt service in half. The challenge for us is trying to structure it in a way that we're not going, you know, we're taking on that 40 million, but not going beyond, uh, the three and a half, let's call it, million a year. And the only way we can kind of govern that is by looking at duration. And so, you know, the typical short end for a, you know, a bond is gonna be on the 20-year side with a, um, with a school construction project and bond counsel is here so that he can tell me if I'm going a little far afield, but, uh, you can take it out to 30. And that's because, I mean, when you think about it, uh, you know, for the uninitiated, you know, when you're bonding a capital project, you're thinking about a school. I mean, the school you just replaced was in use for north of 50 years, I believe, maybe even longer. And so, you're thinking about 50 years' worth of kids and generations living here that are availing themselves with the benefit of that asset. And it's not fair for all the people who are living here today to bear the weight of, or the cost of that benefit for future generations. So you wanna try to spread it out, uh, you know, in the best way that you can. And so, the state of Connecticut allows us to take school projects out up to 30 years. Now, the longer you go out, the more interest you're going to pay. So that's always the tug and the pull, right? It's nice to be able to pay things off fast, but, you know, you also have to have cash flow on your brains too because you guys have to put a budget together every, every single year. You have to set a mill rate every single year. And so, uh, so these are all the different considerations that go into, uh, how we, uh, approach structuring a bond deal like we're talking about, uh, doing. So, um, for the last two years, as I mentioned, uh, rather than issuing bonds right when the project, when shovels went in the ground, um, you know, there were, you know, two considerations there. And I said from this podium, uh, the first one is, uh, at the time, it was still a bit of a moving bogey as far as what the town share versus the state share of reimbursement was going to be. I think that that has since been settled out in pretty close to 50%, if I'm not mistaken. Forty-nine point six four. How great is that? And so, we, you know, obviously, we didn't want the town taking on 70 or 80 million dollars' worth of debt, long-term bonded debt, uh, if the town's share of that debt is only a behalf of that. Um, so, uh, so going short-term made sense there. The other thing is, you know, you never want to issue debt for a massive project like this one was when, you know, you still don't know, you know, they're not in the ground yet, they're not in the building yet. There's a lot of change orders, there's, you know, punch list items, there's all, there's all sorts of things that can happen, uh, with that type of a project. And you wanna make sure that, that, you know, when you do go along with your bonds, that, you know, your, your cost is nailed down and that, you know, uh, the reimbursement rate is nailed down as well. So we want to make sure that we're negatively impacting the taxpayers of Cromwell as much as possible. So, uh, so that's the, the genesis of kind of the how we got here. And then, uh, you know, right now, we are, uh, we're working toward, I think, in October 20th, closing date, uh, for this, uh, the instant transaction that's in front of us, would be looking to price, I think, on or around October 8th or 9th. And then there's a two-week closing window, October 20th coincides precisely with the date that the town's current note matures. So we will, in one fell swoop, issue the bonds and then immediately transfer the proceeds to pay off the, uh, the, the maturing note. So that is the broad stroke of where, uh, where we are. But, um, I could go on as you can imagine, but I think there's probably some, some questions around here. So, Your Honor, thank you again for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. Are there, is there more to the presentation that you wanna go through before you open it up to questions? Or do you think this is a good time to pause for questions?
So, the, the other, uh, two things that I have are, you know, kind of two, let's call them polls of, um, you know, where we could look, which is like a 20-year hypothetical amortization and a 30-year hypothetical amortization. And, uh, and so I'm happy to take you through those.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's go through those and then I think that will probably result in more educated questions.
For sure. Yes, absolutely. And in fact, before we can get there, we can mention, uh, so on Monday, we did our presentation to the, uh, to the rating agency Standard and Poor's. So myself, uh, Chief Salvatore and Sharon. Very, uh, I think, pleasant conversation as these things go. And I've been part of plenty that do not go as pleasantly. The, uh, the nice thing, I think, for the analysts is that, uh, you know, so often in those types of presentations, uh, they're used to, you know, kind of focus on our side of the table, wanting to, to talk a lot about all the great things that are going on in town and, you know, the great direction that, that, uh, that we're going and this or that, and things that'll all happen in the future. It's kind of like, you know, hey, look over here, don't really look over here. And, but the people you're talking to are, you know, accountants usually by trade. They are much more interested in the numbers. And the nice thing is with a client like Cromwell, the numbers, the proof's in the pudding. So to be able to show them year-over-year budgetary results, to show them, you know, capital planning tools, to show them, uh, the financial forecasting, uh, that the town has done, to show them the promises that have been made in those rating presentations in the past and then obviously the promises that have been kept, uh, that bear out in the numbers. Again, all good things. Uh, there were not a lot of follow-up questions, uh, which is always a good sign. There has not been, to, to my knowledge, checking on the way in here. I still have not received an email requesting any follow-up documentation. So, uh, we expect that we're going to get, uh, the rating by the end of this week, I would say by Friday. And so, you know, obviously, fingers crossed, we don't know until they come back and tell us what the rating is. But, uh, you know, all signs point to, uh, and they said it point-blank in there that, uh, that they really have very few reservations about, about the town. So, um, fingers crossed. But, uh, but anyways, that's the, the process that we, you know, go to. We have to get the rating. Once we have the rating, then we will, uh, be able to put that on any of the advertising documents leading up to the sale and so on and so forth. Hopefully, it's AAA so that all the people around these tables can take credit for it. Going forward, is there anything else that you wanted me to mention in particular about that, Chief? Thank you. Of course. Correct. So this is the first time since 2019 that we have proactively gone to the rating agencies and sought a rating and paid for a rating. There have been probably two other times, maybe two or three other times, uh, at least twice in, uh, in those six years, uh, where the rating agencies have come to us and, uh, and surveilled the town, uh, which they do periodically because we have debt outstanding with their rating on it. And if you don't issue, they will come to you and they do it for free. Uh, but, uh, but when, when you're issuing, you have to go pay for it and that's what we did this time, so.
It's not a PowerPoint. It's a PDF.
Perfect. So the, the, no need to, no need to go through the, 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 the numbers. And don't worry, I'm not gonna bore you with, with, with that. But, um, really just, uh, calling attention to the, uh, spread to MMD column, uh, over on the right side. So MMD is the municipal yield curve that, uh, that all municipal bonds or tax-exempt municipal bonds are priced off of. If we're talking taxable bonds, those are all priced off US Treasuries. But, uh, tax-exempt municipal bonds are priced off MMD. And so, uh, so MMD is typically viewed as the price at which a AAA credit would fetch in the market on a given day. So really, if you're a AAA credit, you know, you should be at zeros all through there because that's where a AAA should price. Depending on the market tone, uh, there might be more appetite for, uh, for debt in the market. There might be more appetite for good debt over bad debt in the market on a given day. And so, uh, for that reason, when you have a AAA rating, it allows you to, uh, potentially price below the MMD curve. And, and so, um, you know, right now, minus 10, I think, somewhere between like a minus five or a minus 10 is probably, uh, where we'd be looking to, seeing where the market has gone the last few days. And this is, these are all indicative, you know, uh, illustrative, uh, uh, interest rates. You know, obviously, we won't know anything until they're locked in on pricing day. But, uh, but right now, our desk, and what they see in the market, the appetite they see for AAA paper in the market, uh, they think that the town has a, uh, a high probability of being able to price through MMD, at least in the short end, uh, of the, uh, of the curve. And then obviously, uh, you know, the, where you're gonna pay the highest interest rates typically, if you've got a, you know, normal performing upward-sloping curve, uh, you should see your highest interest rates, uh, in the, in the furthest maturity. And we finally see that now. For those of you who have been bored by my presentations in the past couple of years, especially coming out of COVID, and if you've watched CNBC, you've heard the term inverted yield curve. And so that's where prices in the short and middle, uh, of the middle part of the curve are actually higher than the, uh, the, the long end. Uh, so, so we're, it looks like we're moving out of inversion, which is good. And, uh, and so, uh, then really, we got close to 10 years there, um, of pricing through the curve. So, so we feel that, that the town is poised to enter the market very strongly based on where we are now. Can we go to the next slide, please? So again, uh, as with everything, I'll, I'll show you tonight, the, this are for indicative purposes only. Uh, this is not a representation of, of where exactly the town is going to fall. So this is more just, uh, for guidance. But, uh, so, so the two things, again, that, that we're gonna show you is a $40 million issuance. And, uh, and, uh, right now, the par amount, uh, that we're talking about for this issue is probably gonna be closer to 42 million. But we do believe that with the amount of appetite, uh, that our, our desk sees for the town's paper, that we're gonna be able to generate a fair amount of premium, uh, with this sale. So, uh, you know, we'll be able to hit our $42 million bogey without having to necessarily issue $42 million worth of paper. The, um, so with a, a $40 million 20-year issuance, um, you know, Sharon, let's go to, let's not spoil the lead. We'll go right to the next slide. Uh, two slides then. We can always go back. So, yep. So, uh, so this shows, uh, you know, the 20-year overlaid with the town's existing, uh, debt service. You know, as you can see, in that first, uh, the first year, uh, '26, um, you know, we stay just south of, uh, three and a half million. But, uh, but then, you know, it jumps up for, uh, an appreciable amount of time, pushing over four and, uh, running up to four and a half million in '28 until we get to, uh, you know, really 2039 when it comes back to, to normal. So, um, you know, we are, uh, fettered by, uh, some of the, the statutes of the state of Connecticut, which tell us, you know, how much, uh, you know, principal we can have in a given year. And so, uh, a lot of the structuring decisions are made for us. You know, this is not just, you know, John Healy or Sharon DeVoe sitting in the back saying, all right, let's pack this debt into here and get this. No, there are statutes that, that tell us how that has to be structured. But, uh, but so again, for a 20-year, you know, there's no way to sugarcoat. It's $40 million plus interest in a, uh, in as compressed a timeframe, um, as, as you can imagine. So, um, so I, I think it's probably safe to say that when you start looking at budgets in '27, '28, '29, and frankly, going forward, you know, that's that negative budgetary pressure that, you know, that we mentioned. There's just nowhere else for the debt to go. So.
Just one question. Are those years at the bottom fiscal years or gallons?
They should be fiscal years.
Cause fiscal '25 is over, right?
Fiscal '25 is over. Yep.
So, is that, is the blue, how's that the extent of the year?
Sorry, that, that, that's just to, to show that that was the debt that was paid this calendar year. Yeah.
And if we issued, you're anticipating issuing early enough in the year that we have a payment in the coming fiscal, in the current fiscal year?
Yes. Now, I mean, we have the ability to defer principal for up to two years and this is where bond counsel might be able to.
No, that's just, I just wanna make sure I'm reading here right. Okay, thank you.
So, um, you know, again, kind of the resipso lacqued or the thing speaks for itself. You know, it, 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 the, the question really for the town becomes if you wanna look at a 20-year scenario and, I mean, again, the, the, the attraction of the 20-year scenario is going to be that you're saving long-term on interest costs. You know, again, you know, the, the people in 2046 will thank you, uh, but, you know, probably most of us won't be, uh, standing here. So, um, the, it really comes down to a value judgment for the town as to whether or not those increased, uh, the increased budgetary pressure is something that can be born and that if it's, uh, you know, really, um, the prudent thing to do. For your edification, uh, so if we can go back two slides, Sharon? One more, please. Sure. Um, so right there, just, uh, looking at the, you know, the true interest cost, which is, uh, you know, the, the, you know, there's the interest rate you pay, but then we also view, uh, especially with bonds, you have to view it over time. And, uh, and so true interest cost calculation, uh, takes it in, uh, into consideration the time value of money. And so 3.5%, you know, is the, is the tick, as we would say, of, uh, of this transaction, you know, indicatively. But, uh, really looking at the total interest there of, uh, of 25 million. So, you know, you're issuing 40 million, but really over 20 years, you're paying 65 for the luxury of having that money. And so, I, so that 25 million, the 3.5% tick and the 25 million total interest are the two numbers I'd like you guys to keep in your heads as we look at the next scenario. Uh, and so if we could do that right now, Sharon, that is page 18, please. So, uh, with a 30-year issue, um, so now we've gone from 25 million total interest to 33.5. The total tick, though, has only gone up four tenths of a point, excuse me, four tenths of a percent. But if you, uh, go two slides further, Sharon? You'll see that we still have that same kind of bump in the beginning, but it's, uh, well south of 4 million, you know, uh, trying to keep it closer to the, the 3.5 million dollar target that, that we had talked about. Now, obviously, it, it, anytime you're taking on a project, this is something that the town's gone into eyes wide open. You know, we've known that the town was gonna be, be setting a new kind of floor for its debt going forward by taking this on. So when you start thinking about, okay, 30 years is a long time. There's gonna be a lot of needs that the town's gonna have. Probably wanna look at another school down the road. We might wanna buy some trucks, you know, we might wanna pave some roads. We, we, we got a lot of things to do. And so, you know, but one of the things that, that we've said, uh, to, to both the council and the Board of Finance is that when you take on a project like this, it kind of creates a new normal. And so any of those projects are gonna have to be viewed through the lens of, uh, of this kind of debt baseline, this new debt baseline. And it's probably as attractive, again, it's not going to be exactly like that, but I think that is probably a, a fair estimation. Now, we have the ability to go, uh, lower than 30, you know, so, you know, there's a 20, there's a 30. We could go 25 if that's, uh, something that, um, that, uh, the folks around this table or the town think, uh, that we could, uh, that you could bear or that would be attractive, that kind of balances both the, you know, trying to minimize the interest versus, uh, along with cre- minimizing budgetary pressure or mitigating it to its greatest extent. Uh, but, uh, but that is, that, that's more of a value judgment. The, the, something that should be mentioned, though, is that, um, the town has the AAA rating that it has largely because of the reserve position that the folks in this room have put in it. You know, to, the, I forget, it was eight years ago, uh, the town adopted its reserve policy, which says, you know, we're gonna maintain fund balance, uh, between, was it 15 and 18%? So, um, and then if it falls below that, we gotta have a plan to restore it, so on and so forth. And right now, I think, uh, reserves are, are well north of that goal. That's, you know, partly, you know, I, we're glad the markets have turned around and that the investment accounts are, are fatter than they have been, uh, coming out of COVID. But by the same token, um, you know, part of that has been with the night toward knowing that there's gonna be a big Kahuna item coming online. And so, when, uh, 20, after fiscal '23, when that was the last 3.5 million dollar debt service payment, to then go through, uh, fiscal '24 and fiscal '25 at around 1.4 million, okay, the, those, that, that's not just money to, that, that's part of banking for the sticker shock on this. And so, um, you know, what the town has been very good with, uh, has been, uh, frankly, on smaller items that might have, uh, that other towns might pack into a capital plan, whether it's rolling stock or, or, you know, things below a certain amount. Uh, the town has wound up paying cash for a lot of those, uh, which is great, you know, I mean, cash is wonderful. Uh, but, you know, again, it's always like the, all right, so if we're not gonna bond, then we're gonna be hitting the budget. And the minute we start bleeding down that reserve, now we're threatening the rating. Now we're, you know, which, I don't think anybody in my position would say, you know, protecting a rating should govern, you know, protecting your residents should govern. But, um, but, you know, you threw the, the minute the reserves, uh, drop down appreciably, especially if there's a big drop in a single year, that's the gonna be sort of thing that's gonna be a flag for the rating agency so the rating becomes imperiled. And then, when you, when that happens, when we do have to go out to bond, whether it's for big things or small things, we're paying more money over the long term, uh, for that debt. So, so that's the, again, everything's kind of a tug and a pull and that's why you guys get those nice chairs. But, uh, but, uh, I'd say that the, the 30-year, um, you know, is probably the, the, the best approximation of, of where we see this falling. But, uh, my sense is, is that part of the reason we're here tonight is to get a, um, sense from the room as to where you guys think the town should be. And, you know, we take our marching orders through your agents. And so I'm very happy to answer any questions or, um, or to hear feedback.
Great. Um, so if that concludes the, the presentation portion, oh, yeah.
Do you have the same slide that you had for the 20-year, for the 30-year, looking at the effective rate over time? If you could just compare.
Yes, go, go back two slides. So that's the 3.93 true interest cost, so it's 3.5 in the 20-year, so 3.93 on this one. Again, that.
Almost a half a point difference over time.
Yes, you know, those 10 years.
That's the curve that you were talking about, the old years are much higher priced.
Correct. And, and, you know, keeping in mind that, you know, that everyone talks in terms of 401Ks and everything of the time value of money, well, there's the time value of debt too. And so, you know, extending from 20 to 30, you know, there's a.
It's not only costing us interest over time because we've got the debt outstanding longer, it's costing us interest because we're paying a higher rate over time as well.
Well, you, it's not so much a higher rate, it's, it's the compounding nature of, you know, once it, yeah, once it gets out there. I mean, the, in dollars and cents, you know, it's, uh, about 8 million. You, you're paying an additional 8 million in interest and change, uh, for the privilege of 10 years at a lower debt service. Yeah. Yeah. And, and you know what, Your Honor, um, just one final piece. I, I would really feel like I did you a disservice if we didn't go to that, uh, graph on page 19, please.
Thank you.
So what I'm, we're gonna show you here is, uh, I spoke with you earlier, uh, about the fact that, that municipal bonds are priced off something called the MMD. And so this, I think, just to, to help calibrate, uh, your expectations and your knowledge of kind of where the bond market is today. So that green curve at the top, as you see, that was MMD 30 years, uh, 30 years ago. And then, by the way, moving left to right, on the far left side, that's for debt that are bonds that are issued, let's say, for one year. And then obviously, we're moving year-over-year left to right out to 30. So that's the, the curve moves, uh, time-wise from left to right. So today, so if the green line was 30 years ago, now, ju- just a couple of years ago, coming out of COVID, you know, I mean, rates, you know, rates went, uh, you know, you know, big time, you know, through the roof, even as they, you know, the, the government tried to, to drop them. Um, and so, you know, we've seen periods where, you know, rates have been flirting with the 30-year highs. And then, you know, the run-up to COVID and frankly, any of the, the, the long period from the 2008 financial crisis through COVID, um, you know, the, interest rates, uh, especially bond rates were almost in the, the basement. You know, there was a time when you could issue, a town like Cromwell could issue debt. We did a refunding, I think, in, it might've been in 2019 or something, uh, because the rates were just so stupid low that we couldn't help but refund the debt. But, uh, you know, I mean, on the bright side, it seems like rates are moving south, just not particularly fast. And so the, the bright red line, uh, that's right below the green line, uh, so you can see there's a, a solid gap there, but that is where we are today. And you can see that, that there still remains a slight. are today. Um, and you can see that, that, there still remains a slight inversion, it's pretty flat right now, between where year one is versus years three, four, and five. But, uh, but, you know, winds up going up, becoming upward sloping. Um, but I, but that's, just so you got a flavor of where the market is right now. Yes, sir?
Nope.
Oh.
But I guess one, one other question would be, you know, if this conversation is a board of finance, right, how much capital do we maintain? How much is a triple A rating worth? Do you know what the pricing would have been on this school if you had a double A rating, if we had dropped from a triple A to a double A rating? How much that would have cost us?
Yeah, I'm happy to ask my desk and, and get back to you, uh, get it to Sharon, if she can share it.
Real life example of what the triple A is giving us.
Yeah, value triple A versus double A.
Or would it be able to save us?
Would it save you?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, we, we pay for it because we hold reserves and we maintain a budget the way we do, right?
Yep.
And the taxpayers pay for it.
It's certainly helpful to tell them, yeah.
Be able to do that, but it's worth something, for sure.
No question. I'd be, I'd be happy to get that, I can get that tomorrow to, to Sharon, no problem. So, uh, yeah, that, that's the, the yield curve, there's tons of other graphs, we have charts we can show you, but that one kind of gives you, I think, the best flavor for where the municipal bond market is today. Um, so, after a couple false starts, Your Honor, uh, happy to take any questions.
Um, so what it will do is, I'll open it up to the floor for questions, so if folks have questions, feel free to just, uh, indicate and go ahead and ask. Um, and then, uh, we'll have a robust discussion, just make sure your mic's on when you ask a question, so it can be recorded for the record. Um, but anyone, if anyone wants to begin with some questions, uh, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
I'll get us started. First off, John, good to see you.
You too, Mr. Howard.
Thank you for coming tonight, really appreciate it. I really appreciate, uh, you, Sharon and Tony, uh, going out this past Monday and, um, to hear the feedback that, you know, the S and P seems to have taken the info and, and has some real positive, uh, feedback is, is a testament to you guys. So thank you for, for doing that for us. Um, I'll only start with a few, I don't wanna monopolize, I'll let it kind of kick around. Um, but let me start with this, you mentioned the timeline in October, uh, the October eighth, ninth, and then the two-week kind of bit, and then October twentieth is when it kind of seems like it slams shut, right? Along that timeline, when is it decided which length of time on the bond would need to be done? Is it before the October eighth bit? Is it by the twentieth? Is it in between? Do you get different options at each one? Like, when, when do you kind of have to press the button on which option?
So the, the, the absolute, like, fail-safe is obviously right before pricing. Um, now, in the two-week period prior to pricing, so that period starts early next week, um, what we do is we get the rating, uh, put it on the preliminary official statement, which is the town's offering document, which, you know, if you've ever seen one to go in the finance office, they've got, you know, it's a book about that thick, that if you've never even heard of the town of Cromwell, you can read it cover to cover and pretty much know everything. Um, the, at least on, uh, the way it's run governmentally. Um, and so what I generally like to do is, you put, you put in there, uh, what the, you know, our general thoughts are on structuring, because obviously, we're putting it out there in order to alert the market that we're coming, uh, you know, coming for sale, uh, in two weeks, uh, that these are the maturities that we'd be looking at. Uh, and so, you know, talk to your investors and, you know, and so our, that, that's what our sales force does, is out there trying to sell those bonds or pre-sell those bonds or generate interest in the town's bonds, so that when we, so when sale day comes, we've already got orders in the bank, you know, we're, and then, uh, you know, really, we're just filling any gaps, um, you know, with, with day trades, uh, on, on those bonds. So, the, the honest-to-goodness last chance we probably have for that is the day before pricing. The preferential time for that would be, you know, Monday?
Okay, so a few days, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, second question, real quick, is, and I, I wanna kick this to everybody, 'cause I think I got the numbers right, but in, in theory, right, the school was around seventy, right? And we got a fifty percent bit, so that comes about thirty-five. And I know that the numbers on here we're looking at are forty, right? And Matt, this may fall under your purview, but my, my understanding is, there's a holdback, right, until some sort of audit process takes place by the state to ensure that the expenses that went on for the school are actually reimbursable. Am I correct with that so far, Matt? Yeah?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's the-
Okay.
Glenn, you might know this better than me, but-
The whole school is minus forty-nine point six four. That's, that's part of the problem.
Sure. My question is, is that based on the exhibits we saw here tonight, this takes into account that there's nothing that goes back eating at the principal based upon the carve-back that may come in from the state after the audit gets completed. So there is a chance where that forty, forty-two turns into thirty-seven, thirty-eight at some point in the next few years. Am I off-base with that?
That's a question for-
We were talking about this this morning.
Yeah, what we'll, who, I'm sorry, what, what we'll be looking at is, we're going out with-
Can you go for like, not sure.
A bump jump for a moment, sir.
Let me just give you a little space.
Um, what we're looking to do with the permanent financing, and that's what bonds are, is we're looking to isolate what's gonna be the town's portion of it with our best estimate of what's gonna be eligible, ineligible, and then using those factors, what we're gonna have for money from the state. So, and the thing would be, let's say the state, I don't know, say, two years from now or whatever says, hey, we're gonna give you more, you know, we like the way you're doing things and we've got money and we're gonna share it type of thing. What would happen is, is that would increase the grant side and that might overlap what we're doing with bonds. We would be required, under the Internal Revenue Service rules, that we would have to take what's called a remedial action. And a remedial action would be as, probably the most preferable would be is to redeem some of those bonds, bring your debt down-
Yeah.
-at that moment. So that's what we would do.
Do we have any idea what the timeline is with the state to do that audit, Matt, or anything? Have you heard from, uh, from a building, building committee standpoint?
Yeah, I think, like, they're talking about, uh, the project completion date being next fall, I think, and then maybe give a year for the state audit to be completed.
I would think you're kind of walking with angels if you get, to get a year.
Yeah.
Um, I know a lot of towns on the eastern side of the state are in their fifth, sixth, seventh year waiting for audits to happen. Um, the problem with the state is they haven't brought, yeah, they haven't brought people back, so people aren't there full-time. That's been the problem. So, okay, I know a lot of these towns that have been waiting and waiting and waiting have been offering to, what if we do the audit ourself? Um, and, you know, the trouble is, is the state doesn't trust anybody, I guess, if you will. Um, but also too is it needs legislative backing. So, um, I would not, through the process, like I said, uh, you know, I would love it if it was a year after we completed the project. I would be very active in keeping up with people who are your representatives up in Hartford. Um, and don't be afraid to put the pressure on.
Yeah, yeah, because that, my impression was, uh, the state reimbursements are accepted and paid out up until about eighty-five percent of the total project expenditure, at which place they say, okay, you're, you're filled up now, we're gonna hold off. I mean, fifteen percent of the seventy million dollar project's ten million, and if they end up reimbursing us at half, that's five million that we're gonna get, six, seven years down the road.
Right. And so what you'd want, I mean, unfortunately, the, probably the real answer is what they should do is the state should pay you for the costs of your borrowing, because just about every town-
Yeah.
-is in that same situation. They either have them in notes or they have them in bonds, and you're paying money on that. Um, and the trouble is, is the state's not rushing. Um, they, the one thing they did do that was to try to help was they tried to bring back the, that holdover piece, the, that last little nugget that they hold till they do the audit. But, um, towns are still struggling with that.
Okay. I've got two more, and then I promise I'll, I'll let others go. Um, this is kind of a pie-in-the-sky question, but you mentioned before about, we've done some, you know, a couple of years ago, we were able to refinance based on the rates. Is there a certain minimum number of years on this debt that we would have to get into it before the possibility of refinance?
I'll take that one. Um, it's gonna be the length of the call provision, because back in the tax bill that was in twenty seventeen, um, back during the president's first term, one of the things they got rid of was called an advance refunding. Um, advanced refundings you can do, but they're no longer tax exempt. So, your cost is gonna go up, and it almost makes it really not favorable to, to, to refund in that situation. We are allowed to refund within ninety days of calling the bonds. So the problem is, is that if we have, say, a ten-year call, we're gonna be, you know, ten years minus ninety days, that's probably gonna be the point where we would have to, you know, that we could do the refunding.
Okay. I'd just like to, uh, so, so the ten-year par call that, that Glenn just mentioned, that's kind of the industry standard, you know, we typically always issue debt with a ten-year par call. If, for whatever reason, you have a client that, um, would like the ability to do that sooner, well, that's something that we would have to put in there, you know, uh, in, uh, before we price, and, and you're gonna wind up paying a premium-
Yeah.
-for the, you know, so if we want a nine-year, a, a seven, uh, an eight-year par call is gonna be more expensive than a nine-year par call. And so, uh, you know, and the shorter the window gets, the more expensive it's gonna be. So a ten-year is really where, you know, the, 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 the call provision you can put in there, and it's not going to really upset that, that scale that I showed you of where we see the town pricing. Anything more aggressive than that, uh, you know, that you're gonna start seeing points, uh, start coming back on the scale.
Okay. And my last one, Sharon, would you mind going back to the slide that shows the, the bar graph at twenty years? Okay. So this takes us up to about that four million. You know, I'm just talking very rough across the, the, the board bit there. Um, trying to look way down the line, someone made the mention of another school. Um, I, I guess where, where I'm going with, I know you, you kind of touched on it a little bit during your, your first, your presentation, but basically, my question is, if we were to look at this, the, the bottom line question is, what's left on the credit card? Right? Like, how much flexibility would we still have at the twenty versus, obviously, extending it out to the, to the twenty-five or the thirty, where, uh, if we, if the, the, the decision is made to go with this piece of it, does that almost block out, to a certain degree, an opportunity to do another major project if needed until, was that twenty forty?
Yeah, until that blue goes away.
Uh, that's kind of my question is, is based upon the analytics that I know you just went through an S and P on, looking at our reserves, looking at our, the whole bit, at what point does that bar get up to a certain number and the red lights start flashing and we got some real problems that you talked about that other municipalities have run into? So.
Sure. Uh, so I, I, there, there are kind of two ways to answer that question. I'm gonna answer it the, uh, banker way, and I'm gonna let Glenn answer it the legal way. Um, so the, from, from a investment banking perspective, um, you know, the, one of the, the biggest, uh, things that, that both the rating agencies and frankly, just the market in general look at, you know, is your ten-year rate of amortization. Uh, so they wanna see, all right, how much, uh, how fast is your debt falling off, basically? And so, anything that is under fifty percent is typically seen as credit negative. Now, we're obviously going to that exact scenario with this. We're going to, I think, it's something, depending on the amortization, it's gonna be anywhere from forty-three to forty-six percent on your ten year amortization, down from the seventy-seven, seventy-eight percent it is right now. But we've known that, that was something that was discussed in all the, the presentations, uh, it was something that, you know, the rating agency sees, and, and when you have this little debt on board, you're going to get this type of a, a result. And so the question for the rating agency becomes, all right, well, what are they spending it on? You know, is it something essential, like a school, you know, as opposed to, you know, taking a thirty-year bond for, for a, a car or a police car that's gonna be dead in five years? Um, you know, this is something that you could reasonably, not that you could, Glenn, you know. Uh, but, uh, but the school is something that is reasonably going to be in use, uh, and thriving for the life of those bonds and then some. So it is a, and it is part of the core mission of town government. Um, so it's not a sundry item, it's not a nice-to-have, it's not a sports field, it's a must-have, it's the town's middle school. So, um, you're gonna get some grace from the rating agencies on that. Really, you know, then the, the, the question becomes, all right, how much can the residents bear? You know, because, I mean, all this is born, backed by the full faith and credit pledge of the town of Cromwell, uh, you all have the ability, the unlimited ability to, uh, levy adware taxes on your residents. Uh, and so, but you, uh, you know, even though it might be an unlimited ability, I think you would all, uh, you know, agree that, uh, there's only so much blood you can get from a stone, and, uh, and you have elections every two years, and let's be real. So, uh, so you're kind of the, the, you know, in some ways, the Cromwell market will govern what your ability is to add things to the, to the credit card. Now, there is a statutory debt limit, uh, that Glenn can, Glenn can speak to.
Um, and I'm glad you brought cars up, because under the statute, you're limited with the overall amount of debt that you can take on. And it goes by different categories, general purpose, uh, sewer, utilities, et cetera. Um, that's gonna be a byproduct of, it's a state calculation against what your budget's gonna be. Um, it's not the place you wanna go, though. And, uh, the reason I said about the car, I think of my daughter, when she graduated from college, Chase holders, they would finance a Maserati for her because she was graduating college. Um, it doesn't mean that's the right spot. Um, so, most towns in Connecticut, most cities, very, very few. And, and I'm talking like maybe one, two, or three may have really ever been up against that limitation. It's really gonna probably be more of like what John spoke to, an economic decision, a local political decision, a, um, what that market is gonna look at when they go to judge what you issue.
I'll pass it along. Okay, Steve.
Hey, John, uh, good, how are you? Uh, so, um, I think if I saw, we don't have to go back to it, right, that there was a five percent coupon being used.
Yep.
And is that just, is that something that's up for discussion? Does it have to be five percent? Is it four percent an option? And I get there's different things that happen when you do that, but I was just curious, why the five percent? And was another thing an option there?
So, I mean, uh, obviously, we have, uh, as, as the, the firm structuring the issue or selling the issue, we have the ability to hang whatever coupons we want to on there. Uh, really, in, in the post-COVID market, and I would say certainly in the last three years, you know, five percent coupons have been the standard coupon, uh, that's what investors expect. And so, in order to achieve the scale, the interest rate results and attract the investors that we want, at least advertising or, uh, fives on there, uh, to start is, is, uh, what, you know, we feel like we're meeting the, the market expectation on that. Now, the strategy is that, uh, as I said before, we wanna get out there for a multi-week pre-sale, we wanna build orders, we wanna build interest, um, and, and we do that at the five percent, uh, level, for the most part. But then we get to pricing day, and if we got our orders in and we've got, uh, and then we're, we're open, we're taking additional orders, we're really, you know, pushing the deal hard, well, what we're trying to do is, is get multiple orders in each maturity. So then that allows our ba- our, uh, dealers to go back to their counterparties and try to say, all right, you know, you, you bid this at a five, are you willing to bid this at a, at a four? And then that's how we drive it down. Um, so, you know, what we don't wanna do, so the, the, the broad strategy that we're approaching the market with a credit as attractive as Cromwell is, we wanna get as many investors involved as possible to start. And then we want to use the town's strong performance and credit rating to be able to drive those coupons down. Um, so that's really where we're, where we're at. The, you know, well, at the end of the day, we're less concerned with the couponing, uh, we're more concerned with what the couponing does to drive the, the true interest cost of the, of the overall sale. And so, that's kind of our touchstone. We're looking at, all right, how can we drive the lowest cost of capital for the residents of Cromwell? And then, then that's kind of how our underwriters approach it.
Sure, that, that, that makes sense. And it's sort of, the follow-up to that then, right, then is that the five percent coupon? Is part of that then, that hundred-dollar par bond is gonna sell for one-ten?
Mm-hmm.
Or some other number, maybe one-twelve? I don't, it could be somewhere in that range, right?
Yep.
So if that, if I have that right, and I think I do, um, does that mean then, we go to market for forty million? And I know John kind of asked, I think, so, I'm asking sort of the same question, and just try to keep it as simple as possible, especially for this whole audience here.
Yep.
We go for forty million, is it possible at the end of the day, we're gonna end up with forty-four million from the sale of these bonds? Or some number like that?
If we did not wind up reducing on pricing day, the amount of overall par, and we said, you gotta go out and sell forty million? Yes. And so that, so that additional four million would be treated as premium, and that comes back to the town, you're not, you're not necessarily paying on it, it's still forty, you know, you raised forty-four by selling forty in debt.
Right.
Um, and listen, there, there are some statutes governing-
Any shit.
Premium. And I'm sure Mr. Mailey is licking his chops over there thinking about that, but honestly, what we would probably try to do is, uh, with whatever premiums generated, you know, look to reduce the overall par amount. So instead of having to sell forty and get forty-four, you sell thirty-seven and you get forty.
Thank you. And that's what I was wondering, with the timing of that, is it sort of like, you know, does the sale happen, now you have forty-four, oh, by the way, we actually are only gonna go for thirty-six?
Yeah, no.
Can you do that? Or like, that, that seems, the timing seems very- Can you do that or like, that, that seems, the timing seems very tricky to do that?
Well, we do have the ability to reduce par on pricing day. So if we generate the maximum amount of interest and then all of a sudden through couponing and premium, it's there and we only, I, I foresee a scenario where we're selling under forty to raise, in this situation, under forty to raise forty. I think that the, the overall amount that we're, the par amount that we've been talking about recently has been like forty-two. So, but I still see, you know, selling somewhere in the high thirties and start reducing the par on pricing day today. But that's the kind of agility that you need on pricing day to let the, the, the traders and the dealers go out there and, and basically take the Cromwell story and use that to drive a much better deal, drive the lowest cost of capital, so.
And again, I appreciate the views out there, but to some degree, they're a little bit illustrative. They're pretty close probably in the end, right? If we, if we map up four months from now, a year from now, they're gonna look pretty close to that.
I hope so.
But to your point, right, there could be some variation, right, depending on who does, if you go to forty-four million, we go back down to thirty-six million, you know, that's gonna change depending on the couponing and all that kind of good stuff.
For sure.
Okay, all right, that makes a lot of sense, all right. So then the, for FY twenty-six, in any of the scenarios, twenty or thirty or anything, I hear you said we could defer the principal, I heard that, I think Sharon said that, we can defer the principal. But then will we owe any interest in this fiscal year?
Uh, I mean, obviously that's gonna depend on the final structuring. But I don't, I do remember from having seen the, the deck that I had sent over. Yes.
You do have a payment.
Right, so that, that, that's, that would just be an interest payment there or a reduced principal payment. But, but yes, you'd pay interest that day.
Any, any rough idea how much, you're talking a hundred thousand dollars, you're talking about a million, just any rough even?
If you give me till the end of the meeting, I will get you an answer on that.
All right. Isn't there the figure in that first line?
This is a hypothetical, I actually have some, some other ones actually. And I don't want to give Mr. Wagonowski anything other than the best data I have, so.
So, and this may be a bigger question for the town council. So two years ago, we had put one point eight million aside. In essence, we created debt when there wasn't. We took that one point eight million and in those discussions, and I know specifically that I, what I wanted to see happen, I know it's in the minutes, that was gonna be used toward the schools, one way or another. We didn't decide pay interest, pay down the debt, but, you know, do something, we don't, it wasn't that specific, but it was something toward that. If, I mean, has that been part of the discussion, if we do have some money, whether it be one point eight million or some portion of that, I guess is that a consideration potentially to take that money and put that toward, again, kind of reducing the total debt? So basically forty million minus, let's say it is one point eight million, means we only need thirty-eight point two. Plus then we go to market, blah, 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 who knows where it ends up? But should we be considering that at all in this process or? And I realize you may be crossing a line saying, well, that depends a lot of other things, but I just wanna hear from you, I guess. If it has come up, if you're aware of it, and if not, I'm making aware now, so in real time, what do you think about that?
Sure, well, I, I, as, as I alluded to earlier, you know, we've had, we're, we're now concluding two years at this lower, you know, new lower debt, debt service level. So, you know, there, there's been that, that delta between the three and a half million and the one point four eight million that we're paying now, that really the town's been able to, to bank or at least, you know, inject flexibility into your last two budgets, you know, using that. You know, if it, if it was banked and it was sitting there, you know, there, there's, I guess, two ways you could look at it. You know, and that is, you know, either have it come off the overall par that's being issued and put that in the, in the capital stack toward, you know, paying off the, the, the school's note. Or you, you could say that that one point eight million is something that the town is going to use to lessen the, the impact of the debt service that's gonna be potentially coming online right away and, and thereby, you know, insulate the taxpayers from a, you know, wild mill rate increase or, you know, give yourselves a little bit more Kentucky windage in, in your budgeting job. So that, that's my hot take on it. And, and, you know, the, 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 in the context of the conversations we've had, you know, it's really just been more talking about knowing that, that the town has not, has been at a very depressed debt service level the last two years and then that is hopefully create, help to drive the strong reserve position that the town finds itself in. At the end of the day, how you choose to spend those reserves, whether you choose to spend those reserves is for the people around this table.
Last question, the, in a view that Sharon put together for us, and there's been some talk about the, I'm trying to go ahead and pay off this note we pay. We do pay attention to a lot of details. Forty million. But then we were, there was some discussion like, well, if we're gonna go with the market, why not go for more than forty million? Because we know we have other needs coming up. And does it make sense to do a little bit extra in the bonding? We have a lot of debate about how much that number should be, but five million's been kind of a number written down here. And has that been part of the discussion? And if you do that, like, does that change how the rating agency would look at us? You know, especially, I don't know what the number, I don't know where the number would be like, maybe five million, they'd be like, yeah, no big deal. Ten million, no, I'm gonna have a discussion. I don't know where that falls or if that's even come up in some of this discussion or if that's kind of a dead topic, but I know it has come up. I see it here in the visual, so I'm just curious what are, what your thoughts are on that.
So there, there's no question that, uh, over the course of kind of thinking about this transaction and how we're going to, to dispose of the maturing note in addition to the forty point one five oh that's, that's coming due on October twentieth? You know, the, Tony and Sharon had brought up that there might be some appetite or some need for additional capital spending. And so, you know, the, the first place we start with that is great. If you have an authorization and you're ready to go, you know, we can add it right now. But, but I think that there were, there were a couple things there. Number one, I don't know that there was an authorization. So, so the, the process of going to a town meeting or potentially referendum obviously would not jive with the hard and fast date of October twentieth. I mean, we know, somebody from the town of Cromwell needs to be standing outside with a check for forty million dollars on October twentieth. And so, so we know we've gotta have a financing done at that time. And so really it was more of a mechanical issue, not a value judgment as to whether or not to, to upsize the issue. That being said, what I did say to, to, to Tony was, you know, if, you know, if you wind up getting an authorization, if there, if there's additional capital projects that the town, you know, chooses to do and, you know, whether it's referendum or town meeting, again, I, I forget the exact process here. But, you know, whether, you know, it's, it's in six months or something, we can always go back out with a, with a smaller size issue. You know, we've already got a lot of the legwork that we will have done for this deal will be applicable to that deal. So we'll be able to keep costs of issuance a little bit lower on that. We won't have to build a offering statement from kind of whole cloth like you do when you've been out of the market for six years. But, and, and really, as long as it's for, you know, worthwhile projects and, you know, then, which is, is your domain, you know, I, I don't see it having an instant negative, you know, impact on your rating. Certainly, once you get north of five into ten or more, then I think they're gonna start questioning, wait a second, you know, you guys haven't been in the market for six years and then you come back with forty million and then you're back six months later with another ten, and then they start to say, okay, hang on, what's going on there? And so, so I mean, those are just, and, and they're human like anyone else, so, you know, I, I think those are the types of things that, that are worth thinking about. But the other thing to, to think about is that if you have, you know, we, we have a, a few different tools in our toolbox to be able to finance whatever it is that, that you all decide is worth financing. And we've shown it with, with, with this project too, is that, you know, if you do have something that is, you know, five million or under or ten million or under, you know, that there is a very strong market within the state of Connecticut to go out for, you know, privately placed bank loans, which we can, you know, we're, we're not really subject to a lot of the market strictures there. We can target or tailor the, the duration of, of, of that loan. We, we don't have to get a rating for that. We have to disclose it to the market, but we, it's not something that, you know, we'd have to go for a rating on, so. So we do have some ways that if there are additional capital projects that, that the town authorizes, that you won't be handcuffed and we can do it within reason without hopefully jeopardizing the rating.
Thank you.
And so I just wanna follow up with what Steve just asked. So just for context of what Steve's alluding to, we have a couple balls in the air that we're collectively looking at. We did, two years ago, we did a facility study of the remaining three schools that we have in town to say, hey, what is their current condition, how are they looking? And the agency that we used came back said about fifty million dollars worth of repairs over the next ten years to keep those buildings where they need to be. Now, we've worked with our facilities team to kind of, what can we do in-house, what can we? And we've whittled that down to probably closer to thirty million, but still, each year we're making significant capital investments into maintaining and upgrading the schools so that they continue to be viable for, you know, the next ten years. And, you know, those are things, the study wasn't the most scientific. It was like, you know, a light bulb's life expectancy is ten years, you have five thousand light bulbs, it's gonna cost you this much. But it was other things like boilers, roofs, flooring, ETC, any asset that's physically in the building. And so, you know, we're, we're working our way slowly through that. Last year, we put, I think, a million dollars towards the schools for capital improvements and every year we're trying to chip away at it. So that's one thing that we're actively all contemplating and talking about is how do we chip away at that list? Number two, we had a drainage study about two years ago as well that said we had about ten million dollars worth of drainage improvements that were needed across town that were, you know, flooding mitigation slash sewer, not sewer, but water runoff, infrastructure improvements that were needed. So we have that kind of in a, in another bucket. And then, you know, thinking of the elementary school, which is our other oldest school, our middle school was about seventy years old when we replaced it. Our elementary school is about seventy years, sixty-five, seventy years old, give or take, and its last renovation was in the nineties. So we are also looking at that and we're trying to figure out what is the maintenance that we can do to that building now, which then won't be sink, lost, like a lost cost that we can then in twenty, in the twenty-thirties, look at a reno or rebuild of that building. And so when we're looking out, you know, I think John asked about, you know, what are the twenty-thirties or twenty-forties looking at? We're trying to figure out when we target our next large project, which will be the elementary school, most likely, what gives us or sets us up in the best position for that long-term, you know, ten-plus year outlook? And then in the interim, we know we have, let's just call it thirty million dollars worth of interim projects over the next decade that we need to tackle. How do we approach and tackle those? So something we've been talking about internally is a smaller bond. In addition to this bond, to take some of those big ticket, bigger ticket items and go out while we have a favorable rate and we have a lot of the legwork done, so we can chip away at some of the big ticket items so that, you know, they, they're not gonna continue to be a liability long-term. But we're balancing that with the need not to take on, you know, to John's question, when's the credit card maxed out? So we, we're, some of, some of the people around the table, not me, are financial experts, probably more on that side of the table than over where I am. But I'll carve myself out of that because Jack's sitting next to me. And Al's, you know, people who know, who know more than I do. But I guess what we're looking for from you guys are kind of a, what tees us up to be in the, the best place long-term? If we know, let's call it twenty thirty-four, twenty thirty-five, we may be coming back to you and saying, hey, we're looking to do a reno at our elementary school. Is it feasible in that case to look at, you know, another five million dollar bond in the next five years or three years for smaller projects or should we really be focusing on staggering those projects over the course of a decade so that we're in a good place ten years from now in the elementary school? Because that's what, I think that, that's really what we're worried about. We're gonna, we know the elementary school is on life support. We can, we can Band-Aid it. We're gonna have to be doing something about it in the twenty-thirties. And, you know, what, what will that look like and what sets us up in the best position for success so that the Kent Town Council in twenty thirty-four isn't cursing our names about the decision that we made today?
Do you have any hot takes right off the bat or you want me to start? Oh, yes.
Nobody likes the legal stuff. One thing I would wanna stress is that any authorizations that you would pass, whether it's for, you know, the appropriation side or the borrowing side, they are permissive. So the point being is, let's just say you put in a ten million dollars for elementary school renovations. You're not forced to do a ten million dollar bond because of that action. You can do two, two, three and three or whatever you can do, however, it makes sense for you to do that. I caution you with, as far as approving stuff, too far ahead in advance because you do have a lapse provision in the charter. So I wouldn't wanna see you go through all that energy to get something, especially if it takes a referendum to get it passed and then it just kind of withers on the vine and we don't go forward with it. The other thing is that I wanna draw your attention to is that, again, we're tax exempt bonds. What that does is that brings in all the IRS rules. And one of the things they want you doing, and I think you kind of covered it the right way, we would be borrowing as needed. It's kind of, I think I almost got scared when you said about the five million, if we just up the bond now or whatever, I'm thinking, five million, we don't spend it for another three years, the IRS is gonna be like, you know, off the chart. So that would be the, the legal restrictions. As far as what you're talking about timing wise, that's probably more John and Tony as far as what makes sense as far as, you know, economic. We always call it the business decisions on that.
Let's go the other way and try to be positive and let's say they come in under after we borrowed eighty, uh, forty million. I know pie in the sky, but, and we have authorization for forty million and they come in thirty-seven million. We got three million. I'm assuming we could go back to the taxpayers and ask to spend the three million on drainage?
Yeah, what we would need to do is, because I was talking about those remedial actions, if we had more grants come in sort of thing, reduction in cost is the same sort of concept. What we would have to do is we would have to go and approve, not just the appropriation, but the fact that we'd have to do a bond authorization as well because what that money would be that we would pull out of this issue are frankly labeled bond proceeds till they're gone. So the thing is, is the IRS rules would come in and if we came in less and we didn't need that money, they do have a thing called over issuance and they get, again, their heads explode. And what we would do is we would get the remedial actions, I told you, as far as one choice is to pay down bonds. Let's just say we're in like year two and we've got that ten year call. That may not make the most economic sense because you've gotta put money aside that's gonna call enough bonds to keep them tax exempt. That's not very good use of money if you're like in year two of a ten year call period.
I was just trying to, instead of rebar, going back out and borrowing five, if we could, if we came in under, then some, as the mayor alluded to some of those projects, then take that with the proper authorization and address those issues.
You, you cut my meandering lawyer path here. Because when we use those bond proceeds, we would have to pass something because I don't think we really have anything out there that's a current project that could use bond funding right now. But let's just say, like you said, let's say a three million dollar roof for part of that elementary school. We would pass that authorization, the appropriation and the bond authorization. And then what we would do is we would reallocate the bond proceeds from this issue to be applied to that. And what it would do is, in essence, it kind of makes that new project kind of step in on the bond issue. So you're not reissuing, it's still part of that issue that we did. It's not a, that discounted dollar thing trying to redeem or call bonds. And it's perfectly, the way the, the IRS just wants you to spend the money. And so that would work for, for this instance.
And, and the cost structure would be the same for the residuals as well, right?
It inherits all the attributes of this issue.
Okay.
In that, because you're not going out and reissuing, you're also not rolling the dice on what the market might think.
Thank you.
Where is the authority for that? Is that a referendum issue or is that a board of finance thing?
I would probably say that first and foremost, it's gonna be a regular bond authorization. It's gonna be subject to the limitation as far, that, that percentage amount, whether we have to go to a referendum or not. Maybe it ends up just being town council and board of finance. I, I, you know, that's gonna be judged by that side. As far as moving the money goes, it's really kind of a preference. I mean, it, it's, if you've authorized it, we can authorize, you know, Tony's office to do the, just frankly, what we do is we do a determination letter that says, we're not using this much in this project, we're moving into this other. I would keep track of the bond records, which is my job, to make sure that, you know, we know that one, the bonds are being spent with, you know, the way we intended with that reallocation. And it keeps me on my toes to watch that that reallocation, that project we just authorized, doesn't double dip, so. Thank you.
Since we did go back and get authorization for the soliloquy panels, I'm gonna assume we're gonna have to go back to referendum.
Yeah.
And have the taxpayers authorize.
It, it's always the safest thing. I mean, we could argue or try to pick what's the, the, you know, like, say like the shortcut way to do it, but the bottom line is, is it's still all a political process and you wanna be able to look at your, your constituents and if it passes the same. And you wanna be able to look at your, your constituents and if it passes the same path that we took originally, I think that keeps people from complaining and they feel part of the process.
And, yeah, maybe I should just be quiet here, but I do wanna be responsive to the mayor's, I think, ultimate question, which is, you know, what kind of puts the town in the best position to perhaps face some of these challenges or take on some of these burdens in the future in, in terms of the issues we're here. Good bless you. And so I, obviously, you know, twenty years is the most aggressive timeline, you know, we could map out. You know, then we showed you the thirty years, which is the, you know, least aggressive timeline we could structurally map out. And so you look at that, you know, eight million difference in interest that we were talking about. So, you know, we could talk about going to, to twenty-five years too. And so let's just say for the sake of argument that that would cost you additional four million to go to, to twenty-five. The question is that whether that eight million dollars or that four million dollars over twenty years is worth it to allow the town to take on some of these, to, to give the town the ability to take on, let's say, you know, a million dollars in additional debt service a year to be able to do an elementary school or something like that. And I think when you look at it like that, again, I, I'm not elected official in town here, it's not my judgment. I, but I think we would say when we're talking in terms of seventy, eighty million dollar projects, you know, whether it's four or eight million over twenty years, yes, you'd say, given the town the ability to, to potentially take on something else, of course, you, you might spend that, seems like a drop in the ocean compared to, to, you know, whatever else. But again, that's a determination for, for, for you all to make. You know, my, our conversations that we've had, you know, when it comes to structuring this issue, have really been somewhere between the twenty-five and the thirty years. Again, it's not so much to create an easier budgetary cycle for, for the people in this room, although that may be an ancillary benefit and welcome. Really, it's about trying to create as much debt service capacity, which translates to a budgetary line item, for the town to be able to take on additional projects in the future and not be handcuffed or effectively handcuffed from being able to access the capital markets.
Other questions from other councilors or board of finance members? Yeah, go ahead. And then Ed.
Yeah, I'm not fully clear on the, I guess, prepayment provisions or ability. When you say it's a ten-year call, meaning that there's, there's, nothing can be put down towards the prepayment except the regular scheduled coupons and principal?
So, so really, when it comes to, to the ten-year par call, that, that is the ability for us to, to buy back a, a bond?
Fully.
Right, once it reaches ten years. So if it's a ten-year bond, you know, it's a really, if you use it for thirty years, it's any bonds, ten years up to thirty. And so as far as prepayment goes, I mean, you, you can, we can escrow, we can defees bonds ahead of time. It's just not something that I've seen a lot of towns typically do. I don't know, counsel, if you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, let's just say, you know, how John was saying, how the, the market had gone down to where the, the rates were really low and such. If we ended up in a weird market, because we did at that time have a, a situation where we had actually municipal tax-exempt debt, where the taxable debt was, or taxable rates were actually lower. That might be an instance where then we can do an advance refunding, go and issue, escrow the money. It'll take care of those bonds, once they're callable, bang, they're done, they're over with. The restriction for us is the fact of whether we can do a tax exempt or not. And that's that December twenty seventeen tax bill that went through, that changed all that.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm just thinking that I would like to get numbers maybe from the project manager around, you know, what's our, what's our day one cost and what's, what's the expected state holdback? You know, so if it's to two to five million, we think, hey, in three to five years, maybe opportunistic there. We get, we get five million back and we wanna apply it to outstanding debt, what's, what, what are the options?
I, I think like most refundings, what's gonna happen, I might be stepping on John's toes a little bit, is the market really drives it. You know, I can tell you what the legal parameters are and that's gonna be whether the state allows it, which they would. It would also be whether, from the standpoint of whether it's a tax exempt or taxable. And, and that's kind of what has kind of frozen a lot of refundings lately. Because the difference has been a little bit wider than people care for. But, you know, let's just say you have that money and, I mean, it's not too long ago where the two rates were really right up against each other. It might be worth something like that where now you pay it off, you only paid interest on eight years of it or six years or whatever, as opposed to out, you know, all the way out to thirty or twenty. So it, it is possible to do it, again, it's gonna be what the market kind of dictates.
All right, thanks on that. And then, yeah, the other thing to just keep in mind, you know, Steve alluded to it. So when we looked at FY twenty-five there, you know, one point five million debt service. For FY twenty-six, we have the, a million and a half plug in there. So, you know, the impact to the taxpayer and the impact, impact to the budget, the net impact of the school is really gonna be, you know, going from three to whatever the, kind of the new debt service run rate is. So just keep that in mind, like, if you think about what's the mill rate impact of the school? Yes, just the school debt alone can be expressed as a mill rate. Hey, how's it feel to the taxpayer? Well, we're no longer gonna have to fund the million and a half plug that we had in there. So nat, nat, you know, there's some, that's about half of the, half of the, half of the, the three million per year is already basically budgeted for in FY twenty-six. How so?
Well, because that plug was from two years ago, not from current.
No, no, for current fiscal year twenty-six, right, we budgeted a million and a half to pay for the ban. For the ban, right.
Right.
We're, we're not gonna have that next year. We don't have to budget a million and a half for a ban next year. Instead, we're gonna take on a three million dollar run rate debt expense. So we add three million, we take a million and a half off, net.
Right.
Yeah.
If you think of the ban as not being debt service for the school, then right. But what I'm saying is, half of, all of that is already in the budget. So yes.
Yeah, the year-over, I'm just saying, the year-over-year increase in debt service will not be three million. It will be a million and a half, roughly, with the rough numbers.
Just what the net debt service, if we're at two point eight now, take out the million and a half, add on the three, the green, it'll be good four, four and change.
I guess that's one way of it.
I think that's. Yeah, I'll, I'll pass it along.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
So let me just ask the question, I heard from Tony a little while ago here, forty-nine point six four million, what's, what's that?
Forty-nine point six four percent.
Percent, see? Oh, I'm sorry.
Return from the state is not.
I thought it was a dollar figure.
The entire project's not forty-nine point six.
Well, that was my question, okay. Do, what, what is our projected current, uh, ex, cost, uh, for the town? Are we at forty or forty-two?
No, no, certain sections of, of, of the structure are, are at forty-nine point six four.
No, 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 now, now I'm talking millions. What, what, what's our?
You wanna know the drop dead all-in cost to the town?
What's our, what's our, well, what's our target number for the, for the, for the bond issue?
So I mean, as far as what the town's dollar, dollars and cents, that's, that, Tony, sure. Yeah, there you go.
Forty-two, okay, all right. Uh, just to, just to follow up a little bit on, on, both with Steve and Matt, we're talking. Uh, in terms of how we pay it off, I mean, there's no legal limitation on where we get the money, nobody cares, right? I mean, if it becomes, if, you know, falls out of the sky, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, you wanna talk to your lawyer, but, you know.
In terms of the, I mean, you know, the fine goal in the, in the, under the bill.
Well, no, but the point is if the, if the lender says, no, I, I don't, I, I will not let you prepay this debt. That, that's where I took the ten-year call provision to me. Like, you literally can't give them back the money.
Right.
So.
Yeah, but I, no, but I'm saying in terms of the, in terms of what Steve was saying earlier, it's like, they don't care if we get it from our savings. They don't care if we raise taxes, they don't care if we, you know, start a banana stand, you know, whatever. That, that's correct, right? Because what's the, it's the tax pledge that's backing it, but where you get it from.
And when it comes to the general fund.
Right. On the other end of that, obviously, there are arbitrage concerns if we are doing something that is not, under the various incarnations going all the way back to Reagan. If it's not, if it's a non-governmental use, we've got issues. But I don't think we've done anything, not only have we not done anything that's a non-governmental use, I don't think we've done anything that's not real estate, in my experience.
In, with regards to the non-governmental use,
Right.
I wouldn't let you issue tax exempt.
Right.
We had that problem now, so we, we don't have that problem. What the arbitrage point is gonna be is that, and this is where I was talking about like issuing it as you need it, is that the federal government lets you invest the money for three years, which is called temporary period, at whatever you wanna invest it at. However, at the end of, of that period, if you haven't spent the money through one of the exceptions, what ends up happening is, is that money that's above the yield on the bonds, you have to rebate it back to the federal government.
Right.
So that's why I've been with Sharon and we've been going over cash flows and enough to make my head spin a little too.
Sure. But I guess my, my, my general overall point is, there's issues with the state law, there's issues with federal tax issues, there's issues with accounting. But by and large, as long as we use the money for what we said we were gonna use it for and get the money from some part legal, nobody cares. All right, okay. There's one other thing that we, I think as a group, need to talk about. And I don't know if we're, if we wanna do this right now or not. But, so, there's a concern, obviously, as to the elementary school, which, if we go all the way to twenty thirty-four before we have to do something there, I will be pleasantly surprised. But there's also floating out there, smaller issues. There are, as the mayor said, there's a variety of minor issues with the schools. There is issues about, uh, the, the, some of which we have in front of us very soon. Athletic fields, there is something going on, which I don't know the full extent of, and I, I know some folks in here are involved in this, where we are perhaps getting a substantial donation for a senior center, which may be, I think will be a substantial amount, but may not be one hundred percent of whatever that is. And may be adjoined with a community center or a part, or, you know. In any case, there might be a, picking numbers out of the air, twenty million dollar project of which we get ten million dollars as a donation. And, well, that's still ten million we gotta come up with. So there's that, whatever, whether that number's a million or twenty million, I don't know, but there is an additional number there. I think those are, and there's also, as the mayor said, we, we do have water issues, both for stormwater and sewers. Probably worse for stormwaters at the moment. So it seems reasonable to me that we are looking at something on the order of at least one million, the same amount as the middle of Florida, over the course of the next thirty years. Less than the next thirty years, the course of the next ten years. If we add, if we essentially double, if we take what we're about to do this month, next month, and add, let's, let's call it six years from now, it's not gonna happen this way, but let's call it this. Six years from now, we do the same amount that we're doing now. What's your thoughts?
Uh, it, it, it's gonna hurt.
Yeah.
There, there's, now, that's not to say that there, you know, we don't have some ability at the time or between then and now, if the market moves favorably, to be able to, to refund or restructure outstanding debt for savings. You know, the, we might have the ability to gain some additional, uh, you know, room in the annual debt service payments that way. You know, if there's a change in state or federal law that allows you to potentially extend eligible debt, you know, and, again, there's a lot of what-ifs. If we say that this is the regime we're going to be living under, you know, let's say for the next ten years and there's a, another school in there, well, there's no question that, that, you know, we might be able to smooth things out, but, but, and you can see that it's a, you know, a three and change or, you know, close to, yeah, three, three million dollar annual. And I think really, it kind of nets, nets out to, to, you know, the high two and change million per year. So instead of paying three and a half million, we're now talking about paying five and a half, six million or north of that. And again, we're now just talking about two projects, not, you know, all the other things, any fields or senior center or any other smaller things that, that this, the town not, not just wants to, but needs to invest in. So, and so I think part of it is going to be, you know, not naive enough to stand here and say, getting your residents adjusted to, you know, a new normal and everything. But I think really, it's about, you know, perhaps getting the folks in this room adjusted to, all right, well, you know, we've been really kind of covering that three and a half million dollar bogey in our budgets year over year for a long period of time. But the world hasn't stayed, you know, static. And so, you know, if you adjust that three and a half million dollar bogey, you know, for CPI even, saying, okay, well, next year, we should be paying, you know, three point six or three point eight, and then the year after that. And really, it's about getting the people who are crafting the budget, the people in this room. You know, if, if you decide that, that whatever those projects are, are worthwhile, it should be done. Or if the residents through referendum say, hey, government, this is what we want, okay, well, then the, the choice is gonna be, either there's gonna be a commensurate increase in the mill rate if you don't want to give anything else up in the budget, or there's going to have to be some value determinations as to what you are funding through your budget.
I guess my question, John.
I'm sorry, Mr. Emilio.
Well, no, it's, 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 oh, I'm glad you said everything you just said. I guess my question is, we're gonna have to make that decision, not you, obviously.
Correct, yeah.
But assuming I have accurately portrayed what we're going to have to do, you know, we'll all make that decision relatively soon. Does that change your recommendation? Is, does that push you to a different number or does, would you, would you suggest something different? I mean, if we were doing anything else, I certainly would say, let's do the twenty years, get it done, save some money. We're okay. Me, I'm looking at it now and I'm thinking, we gotta do thirty years because we got other stuff to do. And we can't afford to do it any other way. That, that's my thinking.
God, also, it's just regular operations.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, there's inflation, you know.
And additionally, if you're gonna have those referendums that we talked about, depending on what happens between now and the, so many years from now, five, six, and we say, okay, we need another, and it's gotta be brought to a referendum, is gonna be a lot of decisions made based on what's happened prior to that, to build up to that point and where we are from a mill rate perspective. And it's, uh,
Absolutely.
Those are gonna be serious challenges for, I, I would think, challenges for everyone.
But, but again, just to go back to my question, assuming I'm correct, and we're gonna have those expenses, which we may not, you know, there's a lot of razor cream, but if, if I were correct, that leads me personally to the thinking that, I guess we have to go to the thirty years because we, we're at a lock probably without doing that. Are you, would you think the same way or are you, am I?
Honestly speaking, to answer your question, I would. You know, the, the state of Connecticut has said that, that, you know, this explicitly is the, you know, you can go out to, for thirty years if it is a school. So we're doing exactly what statute has, has countenanced. You know, I think that we're talking about going from, you know, quadrupling the debt load of this town overnight. And so to me, anything that gives the residents and the government here the maximum amount of flexibility taking on something that large is really the prudent step. Because, you know, we don't know what it's gonna feel like to go through a budget with this school on board. We don't know what it's gonna feel like to go through an election with this school on board, you know, a lot of unknowns. And so I would want to have the maximum amount of flexibility. If for some reason we get to years two, three, five, six, and somehow, you know, some angel investor has built you a new elementary school and you don't have to take it on and, and you're like, well, wait a second, why did we take this out for thirty? We can always, you know, refund or restructure it down and, and prepay some of it, certainly, you know, in, in accord with what we were talking about with Matt. But the, but I, I, I tend to think we're just, taking on this much debt, it's exactly the type of project the state counters when they pass the statute. We're talking about really, in a Uh, we're talking about really an additional eight million dollars, or again, projected. Um, difference between the two, uh, eight million dollars to, to, to buy, uh, an additional, uh, million dollars or so of flexibility over thirty years. Uh, it seems like a prudent course, but again, that's just my read.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Assuming we take this out for thirty years, what would the pe- what if any, would the penalty be if, let's say we don't need the money, or let's say we see an increase in, in, in our tax base and revenues, and we find that we don't need it for the full thirty years? Is there a penalty for paying it off in twenty?
Uh, once we get past the, whatever the, the.
The call is ten.
Say that we get through the first ten years and we don't need it, no. And the penalty is going to be the, you're gonna pay for the cost of a transaction and things like that, but.
Right.
Um, but, and, and the only, I should say, that, at that point, the, the value decision that will be before this board and ultimately the, the taxpayers is, um, is the, is the market in such a place where refunding it right now for savings?
Right, do we wanna use that working capital to pay off debt as opposed to just?
If, if the rates go up, you, you don't wanna reissue the debt, you know, it might be for sure, but if it's for, if the market goes down over those ten years, and, and so you're restructuring for savings, then the question is, is the value of those savings, um, uh, greater than, uh, the, the price we would pay for, for paying just keeping the debt as it was, uh, the interest on that? Uh, or if the market goes up, uh, you, you refund it, you're now you're refunding it for this savings, and that can get into a whole nother conversation with bond council. Um, but then, the, does the cost of doing that, is it offset by the amount you'd be saving by chopping ten years off the issue? So again, it, it's, it's, it's gonna be a value judgment at the time, and obviously it's subject, pretty much, I wanna say a hundred percent, well, let's say sixty percent subject to market forces.
Right.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Now, I was just gonna say, you, you touched on it a bit, Brian, is if we really wanna get into, you know, four D chess, and this is where I actually looked at this side of the group, is, you know, if, if you look at the tax, for the tax base as a rectangle, economic development, right, like if we expand the grand list, and, and what's the plan and what's the strategy there? If we feel like that we're tapped out and this is kinda where we're gonna be, then obviously all of this applies, and this is assuming status quo. If we think that there are things in the pipeline, they're gonna grow that rectangle this way instead of this way, then I think that also changes the calculus of this as well, but again, this is, yeah, I'm looking down the line and finding the space and finding the developers and all that kinda stuff, so.
Two, two words for you, John, northern tier.
Yeah, I get it, I get it. But I, I guess I'll just chime in my two cents.
What's that? Nutshell, right there, the mayor's right. That's your future, that's gonna be the, whether or not we're gonna tax residents, the death, the, the northern tier has to be developed appropriately.
And, and that's, that, that's, I know we've been fo- so much focused on this half of the equation, but there, I just wanna make sure that we are keeping in mind that, that other half of it, and I guess I'll just, I'll chime in my two cents here real quick is, you know, I think you mentioned go from the twenty to thirty, net is eight million and change, projected, right? You know, how much do we wanna pay for flexibility, right? That's basically what we're trying to determine and, and get going here.
If I may?
Yeah.
About investing, uh, our grand list growing. The town has been doing like a ten-year tax abatement. So you won't be getting that money for ten years. So we could, not, it's another we could look at for today, tomorrow, it'd be ten years down the road, even though we're gonna get some money from it, but we're not gonna get the whole nutshell until after ten years, which I guess we're putting too many eggs in the basket.
Actually, some of, some of it actually comes up thi- uh, this year, right?
Yeah, yeah, this year.
End of this year, one, one of them, and, uh.
The Marriott is the next year.
Yeah, the Marriott follows it.
To, to your point, Deputy Mayor, it's if, if there is something significant that develops the northern tier, even if somehow in the next twelve months we land something, to your point, we, we're not seeing it till twenty thirty-seven. That's the significant piece of it, right? So that's, that's our determination to question then, if we don't think we've got something of significance that's gonna grow that, that revenue base along this axis, and, and we're only going up this way, is how much do we wanna spend to have the flexibility to take care of the projects that we know are out there? You know, that, I don't know, I, I, I know initially people were talking thirty, I, I, I think I, I'm kinda landing in the middle because it's just what I do for a living. Um, you know, I, I don't know if twenty, 'cause to, to your point, John, I also don't wanna land in the middle of twenty-five and then be stuck on both sides, where we, we're trying to save money up here, but we still don't have enough, you know, of a, of an ability to be flexible and do things that we wanna do because we didn't stretch it out over that last five, so I don't.
And I'd like to offer you this, John, the, my, the, my, the guy who hired me into this business, Dick Thievers, he stood at this podium many times, you know, he would always say, it's, you know, it's really easy for, uh, folks like us to, to get into kinda that four D chess when you start bringing in the financial, the political, the economic, the, you know, and what if, what if, what if? Um, and he would always just kinda cut through and just say, listen, if you have a deal in hand, you know, you run with that right now. Um, and let everything else take care of itself. And so, um, you know, the, one thing I will say is, I have, in, in the twelve years I've been doing this, I've never seen a town, uh, issue, uh, issued debt like the new money debt for a capital project like this, and then get, you know, midway, or ten years down, I can't, I'm only twelve years in the business, you know. Uh, and, and then, uh, you know, start to, to, you know, hey, we've got too much money, we're gonna start retiring this debt. You know, um, that, that's just not a, you know, what I.
We're not striking oil anytime soon.
The one thing that I have seen over and over again is towns where their debt curve, their debt service curve, you see that, that jump up in twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, you see how it goes up real quick. And now if you start talking about layering on additional debt on top of that, that cliff gets even higher. Uh, all of a sudden, uh, because, you know, we went too short and, and, but the needs is, are so great, um, in order to make your budgets work, I've seen plenty of towns do what is affectionately called a scoop and chuck or a scoop and toss, where, you know, they just say, all right, we can't afford our debt service payments, so we're gonna lop off the top of that and kick it out and bond it, um, because you have to do that in order to make, it's either that or issue tax anticipation notes or things that towns that are in financial distress do. And so that is something that I've seen happen far more often, and so that's why what I would say, you know, because of just even in the last half hour, the amount of different permutations that have been brought up, the amount of different question marks that are still out there about what could be, I would want to err toward the side, side of whatever is going to give this town the ability to come back around this table and have as many of these discussions as possible, uh, and have options. And that's what I think, you know, going longer gives the town for relatively inexp- inexpensive amount when looked at in terms of the total project cost, is it gives you all options, it gives the, the taxpayers here options. Um, and again, you issue thirty years and somehow, you, you, you have a eureka moment and you wind up striking gold or something, and you, we can, uh, you know, refund or defees some of those bonds early, you can absolutely do that. But it's, I think, a lot tougher to, um, or it's a big, much bigger hit to the town to have to put, be in a position where you need to do some sort of a bond transaction in order to make your budget work than it is to, you know, uh, extend this debt and, and defees it down the road.
Real, just real quick, in your experience doing these, is there a vast majority of towns that choose a certain year? Or is it kinda spread across twenty, twenty-five, thirty, whatever? I mean, i- i- is it, you rarely see anyone come off of one of those options? Or is it, is it always thirty years and maybe someone does twenty-five, like where, where does it kinda fall in?
I've never been the underwriter for the town of Greenwich, but I can imagine that they might look to a twenty-year, you know, potentially, but, um, but even, even then, um, you know, really what you're thinking about is, you know, at, you know, potentially, you know, four, you know, four percent or under, are, are you willing to say that, that, you know, getting a rate of four percent, that, that's valuable enough, uh, you know, and, and good enough to, to, uh, to be able to go out there? We, um, but in my experience, uh, no, I, I think the, the school finances that I've done, most of the time the municipality is taking it to the thirty-year limit. Uh, because there are so few projects that the town can undertake, even rebuilding a town hall or, or a library or something like that, where you can guarantee that this thing is gonna still be in use thirty years from now. You know, that's the thing. Um, you know, there are so few projects, Glenn can give you a whole useful life discussion and all that stuff, but, um, but with a school, you know, you know that school is gonna be there, God willing, thirty years from now, so.
All our projects are still in use.
No, Jack, you're, you're not, you're not wrong, and that's where I'm trying to balance, where if we have a demand and a need to take care of things for the residents, I also don't wanna tie our hands for the next fifteen years, and now, you know, we're really so, I.
Well, I, I listened to you and I, 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 I'm falling in that direction as well, 'cause it, we, I think maintaining the flexibility with what we, what we have and what we have to do, uh, I think, uh, a longer term will, will give us, will allow us to have that flexibility.
So, Mr. Mealy.
Procedural question. Who actually makes this decision?
Per the, and correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, per the authorization that we, we, we did, um, it's the town manager and advisement, and the finance director and advisement with bond council. Yeah, I thi- I believe in, in that initial authorization, it said that it, it gives that decision-making to them.
Yes, I think that seems reasonable, I just wanted to make sure.
We're, we're advi- we're, I mean.
Our open for it.
I think the point of this meeting was for us as the, the policymakers, the legislative body, to be able to hear the perspectives and give some, you know, give, voice our concerns and get questions we had answered, so that when we're making policy decisions, the administrators can be able to make the best informed decisions that they can. So, um, are there any other questions for, um, either of the gentleman?
Can I?
And Mr. Town Manager, yes, sir.
Can I assume the best is thirty years?
Well, I, I, Mr. Town Manager, I, from what I've gleaned from the content around here is that, you know, preserving the highest degree of optionality for the town while, you know, creating at least some amount of budgetary pressure in the near term is the priority.
And the two bodies are in consensus?
I, I have a, I'm, I wanna do a quick struggle, I, I, I do appreciate the, the opinions here, and I can understand the desire to have flexibility, um, but to me, to me, eight million dollars is, uh, is a heavy thing to swallow, and, and given the position we're in, we should, I would hope we've afforded ourselves the ability uh, to pay down this debt, uh, quickly, um, whereas, you know, a, a less qualified borrower or a borrower in, in less financial security, uh, may decide, hey, we have no choice but to go thirty-year. And I think they end up, you know, paying some extra because of that, um, inability. I'd say if we had to do another thirty, forty million dollar borrowing in ten years, I mean, the debt service will still be less than eight percent of our budget at that point in time. You know, I think that's, that's still reasonable now, just my opinion.
Okay, Sharon, can you throw the slide back up for the thirty?
This is the thirty.
That is, back up to the twenty, so, so this goes up to under four, can you go back up to the other one then?
Yes.
And four and a half. So we're talking year over year, we're talking half a million bucks. Am I, am I doing that math right?
Uh, in some maturities, it's closer to a million, but sure, somewhere between.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the first initial years, I apologize. Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm trying to look at, to, to Matt's point, you know, what's, what's the true dol- can we, can we get to a half a million dollars a year extra in, in expending this and still get stuff done that we wanna do? Or stretch it out, and what does that mean for us? I just wanted to get that visual thing, Sharon.
Yeah, I mean, that second test, that issuance could always be at thirty if, if we need to, you know, make it that work. I would just think this initial one, you know, it's worth stretching a little.
If, if that second issuance though is only for a certain set of projects, I don't know if we're gonna, can, can we, I don't know if we can extend it out to thirty. If it's for the elementary school, yes, I'm talking, if we're talking some of these other projects, I don't know if we can stretch it out to thirty, that's, that's all.
Well, and, yeah, so, I mean, again, I'm not the financial guru, that's what you all are for. My perspective is on it that I think the flexibility is really important, because I think that five hundred thousand dollars to a million a year is going to be able to let us do all of the smaller capital projects in a spread out way, and I'm worried, I am worried that the twenty-year is, is so aggressive that it'll really handcuff us to, and limit us to be able to make those other investments that we know we have to make. I just don't know how we ma- do, you know, I'll give you an example. WISF fields, not something we would go out for bond for, but it's a million, it's a million dollar drainage improvement to the fields that, that we have fields, they put clay down instead of topsoil twenty years ago, so every time it rains, it's just a giant bowl, and it's where the majority of our soccer fields are, so it's a million dollars to dig it up, put the right stuff down, reseed it and get it down. That's a project we're gonna be looking at. If we, if we are at a twenty-year, that's not something I'm, I'm, we're gonna be able to feasibly do. And then on top of that, you know, whatever else the schools need, we did a million this year, I'm anticipating every year, uh, you know, Steve has the spreadsheets that can tell me what the growth is on it, but, you know, I'm assuming every year for the next, you know, five or six years, we're gonna be pouring a million dollars into capital improvements to the school each year. I wanna be able to have that flexibility without having to hit the mill rate each year, or very wildly on how much, uh, we're impacting or how little we can do. I don't wanna kick the can on the projects either, 'cause that's how we got there. That's just my perspective.
So, putting in towns, townspeople's view, we're talking about four tenths of a mil difference between twenty and thirty years, so what's that? What's that on the average for a taxpayer to pay annually?
Well, you, so basically that bottom of that spreadsheet, that, do you have that spreadsheet?
Yeah.
So we can throw it in on our, on our house, right, you know, we can see what the.
I mean, that's, that's really what you're talking about, is what the person's gonna see, how much additional tax. You already have people out there already talking about the fact that this school's gonna come online in twenty twenty-seven, it's gonna, in twenty twenty-seven, it's gonna be a wake-up call, right? I mean, it's no question about it, we're, we're growing up.
Yeah, I think Sharon did those numbers wrong.
She did.
Yeah, we got, we got the, uh, uh, you know, I mean, I'm all for flexibility, but is, is it worth flexibility?
Is we really getting the flexibility that we're talking about by stretching it out? And what do we, what, what do we bond with that?
Oh, golly.
Was that twenty years?
Yeah, so, so.
That was two thousand, wasn't it?
Sharon, Sharon gave us the following readout. Um, forty million, twenty years, fiscal year twenty-six, two hundred and forty-five dollars per household. Forty million, twenty years, twenty-seven, four hundred and eighteen dollars per household.
So you're talking about a hundred and sixty dollars.
And then I'll just do the same number, forty million for thirty years, two hundred and twenty dollars per household, twenty-six, two, twenty, fiscal year twenty-seven, three sixteen per household.
Yeah. And, and the number, just, just for clarity on my part, the number that we bond at is gonna be a predetermined amount based upon what we need. I mean, we're not here to talk about whether we're gonna get an additional five million dollars, right? It's just based upon what the number is to pay for the school, right, and then.
Yeah, the, well, the, for me, the, the kick in the pants is the holdback, right? 'Cause we, we gotta bake in seven million. Right, but I mean, well, it's, it's significant.
Well, but.
We're gonna have about this.
As we pay, right, there's two, two.
The next six, six months, right, yeah, that's gonna be what we need to borrow.
One thing that we should all be remembering is, historically, as a town, we have always taken, uh, money from the fund balance, which we always had access to, uh, to pay for our non-bonded capital needs, you know, the trucks, the, you know, the things we call capital, which maybe they are, maybe they're not. Uh, we didn't do that this year. You know, this year we took the two million dollars that fell out of the sky, that we think of it as having fallen out of the sky, although we took, we took it from the taxpayers four years ago, uh, and we used that to fill in a lot of our gaps. Well, we're not gonna, I'd be shocked if that happens again this year, so we're already two million in the hole for the next fiscal year. Um, and, you know, I, I just can't see how that's go- that's gonna change anything for the good. The other thing is, and I'm not so worried about, uh, the holdback, is although that is problematic, I personally, and maybe I'm the only one, I have no problem spending the money that's in our reserve for money that is owed to us by the state, and we're not, we don't have, that's what we've been doing. We've had long discussions, certainly in the Board of Finance, I don't know about under the council, but we have had long discussions for years about how we account for money that we're owed by the state. And to the extent that we have a million, five million that we're owed by the state, which we know we're gonna get ninety-eight percent of, or, or at least in a year or two or three, I, I personally. or, or at least in a year or two or three, I, I personally have no problem taking money out of our reserve and using that money to, to, to fill that in. It's different from a lot of things we do, but I mean, it's a way to get around it. We do have these short-term issues, which we're gonna have to deal with. Uh, but, like I said, one of the, one of the biggest short-term issues is, we, we used two million dollars of, uh, income last year that we're not gonna have again, so even though we say the mill rate's not going up, well, unless the budget goes down by two million, which, you know, let's not, let's not wait for that to happen. Uh, then we're gonna have, we're, we're, the actual effective need for cash has gone up substantially without our doing any. So we should be aware of that as well.
Mr. Mayor is correct about last year, uh, also, two years ago, because of ARPA, we didn't also, at least on the town side, the Board of Ed is another story. Um, the town side, we used it, uh, in lieu of C N R. I still think the only, uh, choice, uh, that we have, and I'll stand corrected, is the thirty years.
If I may.
And, and I just wanna add, and I'll stand corrected, uh, by, uh, Mr. Healy. Uh, if we start using our reserves, uh, based on, uh, our interview on Monday, I would say that eventually that will affect our, uh, bond rating.
There's no question that, as I said before Chief, that, that the triple A, uh, is largely the product of the town's robust, robust reserve position. You, uh, you have a policy that protects that, you know, fifteen to seventeen percent. I think that, you know, if you were to drop, uh, you know, approaching seventeen, we'll start kinda putting up flags once you drop below seventeen. Uh, even though the town, when you think about it, is still in a fine financial position, going in that close to the group. It, it's just represents a departure from the budgeting principles that the town heretofore had been practicing, and that's going to be a negative pressure. I can't say with any certainty, uh, you know, at what dollar amount or what percentage, you know, does the ax fall or the rating fall? But, uh, but there's no question that, uh, that right now, you're in a very robust position, you probably have a little, little room. Um, but, uh, but I would say, you know, it, based on the town's policy, once you start getting down to touching that policy, that's when it's gonna be, become problematic, you know.
And, and if I may, Mr. Mayor, add about Monday, uh, first of all, Mr. Healy and, uh, our finance director did an excellent job. Uh, Mr. Healy gave them, uh, asked for them to let us know by next Tuesday, and, uh, they offered to get back to us by noon on Friday. So if I'm a betting man occasionally, uh, I, we're maintaining our, our triple A, I would, I would venture to say.
Well, I would just like to put in there that the chief did, he's, I think he spoke most of the time and he did great, so.
If I may, would it be inappropriate to ask our finance director what, guestimation close come, uh, the first of the year? What we have for a surplus?
For a master?
Total, total.
For fiscal year twenty-five?
What we have, total of twenty-five.
Plus what we already have.
Fund balance.
What's our fund balance?
Oh, so I'm anticipating, like I said, it's like at the left town, I'm claiming it's like one, one million dollars. The board of ed is at five seventy-seven?
No, but Sharon, what's the total amount of reserve?
What's the total?
The, the mast- master results.
Oh, that's in our packet, right? I think it's in our packet.
Yeah, it's in your packet. I think it's four something, right?
No, we gotta be in the twelve million range, right?
The mill will be available.
Fifteen, fifteen and change?
That sounds like it.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, that's what they.
Four point nine remaining available?
Guestimate, one of the council meetings, one, the question was brought up, she did make a remark or did say that, uh, somewhere's around fifteen million dollar surplus. Correct me if I'm wrong Sharon.
The top line is sixteen.
Yeah, the sixteen, seventeen, yeah.
That's, that's considered surplus, is it?
No, reserve, reserve there.
Okay, reserve.
Thank you.
Cause we're.
Are there any other questions or comments from anybody? Okay, I will leave the town manager, finance director and, uh, our bond counsel and advisor to some difficult decisions in the next two weeks. Uh, but I thank them for joining us at, uh, this meeting, they're welcome to stay if they'd like to hear about seventy dollars, um, to be appropriated for the balance of a track, but, uh, if the Board of Finance, you're welcome. Yeah.
So when, when this activity happens, I guess how soon after can somebody share with all of us, sort of what actually happened? Like what went down for that? So we will, uh, on pricing day, we will provide a post-pricing analysis to Tony and to Sharon and to bond counsel. It's their call whether they wanna share with all of you, but it's, I, I think that that would be exactly what you're looking for.
Or maybe Oc- October, yeah, Board of Finance meeting, uh, we could recap at a minimum, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just wanna say, uh, this is the first time that I've, I mean, I've gone before councils, gone before boards of finance, gone before these councils, Board of Finance. Never a joint meeting, I think that this is a, a pretty cool thing to, to actually be able to get, uh, feedback, uh, from, uh, all the elected officials of the town, the people's representatives. Uh, it is helpful for us because, you know, while we try to let dollars and cents and driving the lowest cost of capital, uh, guide any of the decisions that are left to the chief and to Sharon, um, you know, i- i- it is very helpful to be able to get a first-person flavor of where the people's representatives, uh, are thinking. Uh, so I wanna thank you for the opportunity, thank you on behalf of Glenn for the opportunity to still serve the town, so.
Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you guys, really appreciate it.
So John, I think you'll need a motion to adjourn for your body?
Nobody's seconded it, so we're here. Alright, second, anybody, anybody got a problem with that? Good, we're adjourned.
Okay, so you're welcome to stay if you wanna hear about the seventy dollars.
I'm, I'm on the edge of my.
It's on your, it's on your agenda for tomorrow, right? Are you?
Yes.
Yes, the track, the track's on your agenda for tomorrow. Yes, we're seventy dollars short from our original appropriation. We said, we said we were gonna do fifty fifty and we gave a number of tw- uh, essentially, right?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Town Manager, go ahead.
I hate to throw a monkey wrench.
Go ahead, Mr. Town Manager, go ahead.
I just, but there was a counselor that did ask about the long, uh, jump.
Yes.
I can't remember who it was.
Brian?
Might have been, so we did some research after Claudio assured us that it was within the track, if you remember.
Yep.
Unfortunately, that's not correct. So, um, this was brought to me by, by Mr. Herriman because, uh, it will affect if we go forward. So there is one in here, but there's another long, the long jump is actually outside and runs adjacent to the tennis courts. That is in the area where, uh, eventually we would like to expand, so, and there's a colored picture of it, um.
So is it between?
Outside, yeah.
Is it between the track?
Track and tennis court. So, I mean, it, if, if we go forward, it could result in less parking stalls.
Right.
Uh, and at this point, I'm, I'm probably making that suggestion that we go forward, but since it was brought up and the wrong information was provided to the council, I wanted to make sure that.
Is there an area on the other side of the track where that can be placed so that we don't have to compromise the parking stalls?
Well, right now, it's fine because we're not building the parking lot. I, I was more concerned about we're gonna resurface the track.
Would that be between the fence and the track?
I don't believe there's enough room in that area, that's pretty sure.
And that was where I was going, I don't think there is either, but I'm not sure.
I think it's gonna have to stay where it is, but, uh, right now the plan's on enlarging the parking lot based on some of the forecasts you heard tonight, I'm not sure when we're gonna get to that.
This is probably a foregone conclusion, but the pill I have a problem swallowing is that they have a five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar surplus in their budget from last year. They've come to us, first they came to us with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar offer, we got them to come up to half on the ifs and buts that they may lose federal funding, but where are they gonna go when they lose their federal funding for money? They're gonna come to us. And if they don't lose that federal funding, what are they gonna do with the other two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that they had in surplus?
They'll find a way.
We don't have an answer, we, we don't have a say in that, correct? Then why don't they finance their own track? Because they're gonna come to us for the money if they lose funding anyways. But then I know, I'm opening a can of worms, and we agreed to pay the half, but I just wanted to say that out loud.
With all due respect, I recommend that the council appropriate seventy dollars, but I just wanted to make sure you got the right information.
No, Brian, I, I, those are excellent points, uh, I think unfortunately.
Unfortunately, it's a little daylight and a dollar short.
Correct, that's a good, that's a good way to say it. Um, I mean, I think we, we did remind them and they did vote thankfully to appropriate the other fifty percent because otherwise we'd be having a very different conversation right now. Um, we gotta, I mean, i- it's all, all ultimately the town's money, what I would like to see is the Board of Ed, if they don't use that money to give it back to the town for the capital expenditures as a whole. Like I told Selena at the last meeting, or we told Selena at the last meeting, the more we spend from our, our surplus, the less we have at the end of the year to be, to be looking at other C N R projects. And there may be other C N R projects that will take priority. I, I'm comfortable moving the seventy dollars ahead, but I think we need to continue to be on them uh, about how they spend their, their surplus and their balance and continue to communicate to them that the expectation we have is that that money is to be used for emergencies, not for supplemental funding for things that are, I, the council had a really nice word for it, um, amenities, is that what he called them? He, he, he said amenities versus, yeah, it was amenities, so, right, so they need to be hopefully spending that surplus on amenities and not, not on amenities, but on necessities if they do lose funding or something else, not on, you know, the town manager alluded to it. Two, using ARPA money to hire grant-funded positions that expire on our budget.
So James, so, so they need seventy more bucks?
Yes.
Are they putting in thirty-five and we're putting in thirty?
They already put in, they, they're.
Oh, they put in seventy, oh.
Can I make a motion?
Go ahead Brian.
Can I make a motion to, um, accept the seventy dollar increase?
Motion made for Brian. To appropriate this extra seventy dollars.
Second.
Second by Jack, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, any opposed? Abstention, motion carries, next is citizens' comments, any citizens are welcome to come speak for two minutes. Hearing none, uh, may I take a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Oh, okay, you're not a citizen, uh-oh.
Motion made, do I have a second? Second, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, okay, we are adjourned at seven forty-seven.